Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Village of Waukesha. Tonight is Thursday, March 11th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. This is a joint Plan Commission and Village Board meeting of the Village of Waukesha. So we're called to order here at 6:30. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think Carl, you're going to do the honors and lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carl. Can everybody, is this microphone working well? Can everybody hear me or not? It's okay? All right, item three is roll call of the Plan Commission and Village Board. Brandon.
Bukels, Sizney.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Piala, Stigler.
Here.
White.
Here.
Dur.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
German.
Here.
Kalinsky.
Here.
Stigler.
Here.
Just so everybody understands, just a quick thing, again, this is a joint Plan Commission and Village Board meeting, so the first part is Plan Commission, the second part will be just Village Board only, and the Plan Commission is made up of several members of the Board. I'm a member of the Plan Commission, as is Trustee Stigler, and then citizen members who are here tonight are Mary Sizney, Dan Bukels, and Al White. So those are people who are part of the Plan Commission, and then the Village Board, right to left, Trustee Stigler, Trustee Dur, I, Trustee German, and Trustee Kalinsky. So for new people, it might seem a little confusing, but that's the composition here. All right, item four is open meeting law and compliance check. The agenda was posted and distributed to all news media requesting notification in accordance with the open meeting laws and posted on or before Wednesday, March 10th. Communication with village residents, we have nothing on the agenda for that tonight. Item six is citizens' comments. Anyone who would like to address the Village Board and Plan Commission, you're welcome at this time to come to the microphone in the center of the room. When you do, please give us your name. If your last name or first name is challenging, please spell for us, give us your address, and then proceed to share with us what you'd like to tell us tonight. So citizens' comments, anyone who would like to avail yourself.
Hi, Glory Kurth, S-31, W-25109, Green Valley Drive, Waukesha. I have a question for the Village Board. Does anyone know if your fire department is within its budget?
I'm going to answer your question this way. We really do not answer questions or get involved in debate at citizen.
Well, I wanted to know, it was just a yes or a no.
We don't do that at this point in time, but I'd be happy to get you that answered. We will get back to you tomorrow, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One other comment regarding the potholes. Is there a site on the village website that you can report potholes? If not, shouldn't there be?
I think, do you, Brandon or Beth, you want to have an answer for that? Would we use our citizens' concern or complaint form?
There is a citizens' concern and complaint form that you can certainly require her report pothole issues, and we'll get it taken care of.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak this evening, come forward, please.
Sandy Ham, West 230, South 3827, Milky Way Road. I was disappointed this morning to see a story in the Freeman relative to the village. For those that haven't seen it, it's a complaint, it was actually a letter written to the Freeman that they wouldn't publish, but they made a story out of it, and it's Mr. Dur raising concerns about a campaign sign used by President Fisher and his supporters. And I've sat here for 15 months, listening to campaigning going on during meetings, and kept quiet, and thought I should say something, but I haven't. But I'm going to write to the Freeman, I have already submitted to the Freeman, and since many of you may not get the Freeman, I'm going to share with you what I say. The title is "Fisher Campaign Sign Tells a Story." Regarding his quote "concerns" end quote about Village of Waukesha President Brian Fisher's campaign sign, "Trustee Michael Dur is grasping at straws, as he has been consistently since he lost to Fisher the last time around. There is nothing inappropriate about the Fisher-Stigler-German-Kalinsky sign."
Mr. President, are we going to allow this campaigning during citizens' comments of a town or a village board meeting?
Yes, I'll allow him to make his citizens' comments.
Oh, how convenient it is that you'll allow it.
Proceed, please, thank you.
I'll go back. "There is nothing inappropriate about the Fisher-Stigler-German-Kalinsky sign as detailed in the Freeman's Page 3A story Thursday, March 11th. Quote, 'One might ask,' end quote, why is this even brought to the Freeman, other than an obvious attempt to besmirch his opponent in the press? Dur could just as easily have contacted the state Attorney General's office himself. Oh, but then there would be..."
I thought we didn't allow personal attacks during our citizens' comments, Mr. President. This is a point of order. I thought we didn't allow personal attacks during citizens' comments.
Why is this a personal attack?
Okay, stop, everybody.
He's pointing people out on the Village Board. That's a personal attack. How many times has he mentioned my name?
Well, he's expressing an opinion as a citizen on an event that occurred.
It's not an opinion, it's a personal attack, and we've never allowed that appropriately so in citizens' comments.
All right, we're going to stop here, and we're going to allow him to continue. Go ahead.
It's amazing that that's going to happen. It's amazing that it's an issue. So, "Oh, but then there would be no story in the paper. What the campaign shows to Dur and the community as a whole is that three-fourths of the village trustees support President Fisher's reelection. That means all village trustees support Fisher's reelection, except, of course, candidate Dur. That seems like a pretty strong statement of support from the Board for their president. It's no wonder Dur is concerned. Fisher is successfully leading the Village Board and serving the Village of Waukesha well. I'm exhausted by all the frivolous petty grievances aired both in Village Board meetings and in the press. You'll see it in the paper tomorrow or Saturday. Thank you very much."
All right, who else would like to speak? Please come forward. Okay, if there are no further citizens' comments, we'll go to item seven, which is discussion and possible action on a conceptual review of rezone requests from R-1 residential to B-2 local business and a site plan, plan of operation request for Brandon Reinke, agent doing business as Galbraith Carnahan Architects for the property located at Lot 2, CSM 8463, which is part of the southwest one quarter, Section 23 Lawnsdale Road, tax key WAKT1387998010. Is there the petitioner, someone representing the petitioner here this evening? If you would just come forward and introduce yourself or yourselves, and then we'll let the staff here make a presentation, but introduce yourselves, give us names and addresses, please, and then you can kind of hang with us, you'll get a chance to talk a little later, please.
My name is Brandon Reinke, 2001 South 91st Street, West Alice, Wisconsin, 53227.
Thank you.
Mike Dufek, Dufek Construction, 2715 Field Ridge Drive, Waukesha, Wisconsin.
Okay, if you guys want to just kind of hang out there, you can either stand or sit down at your pleasure, and I think we'll then proceed to have staff presentations. Sean, are you prepared to take the lead on this?
Yeah, I can give a brief overview, sure.
Please.
So the property in question is at the northeast corner of 164 on Lawnsdale Road. You can see it on the overhead above. What they're requesting is conceptual review of a rezoning from R-1 residential to B-2 Local Business District, and also site plan, plan of operation review conceptually, in order to construct and operate a 4,600 square foot salon, which would be called Z Salon Suites. They're going to offer individual suites that'd be rented by stylists within the building. There'll also be some common open space within the building, including a laundry room, break room, and restrooms. The reason it's being brought forward conceptually instead of for final, for public hearing for rezoning, and then final site plan, plan of operation review, is because the access is limited to Lawnsdale Road, and it's a bit of a tricky situation in terms of where access is located, so we wanted to talk through the issues with the Plan Commission, with the Board, prior to proceeding with the public hearing, et cetera. In terms of the comprehensive plan, it is, the whole northeast corner of Lawnsdale and 164 is planned for commercial use, including the property in question, which is right at the corner. Fox River Church is right across the way from the property. The proposed zoning is going to be, as I mentioned, would be B-2. The proposed site plan that was submitted does meet all the requirements of the B-2 zoning district in terms of use and setbacks, building areas, height, et cetera. Plan of operation, again, is limited to individual stylists to utilize and rent the space. There would be up to 19 independent stylists onsite at any one time, but more typically, not everyone is there at once. No company vehicles with hours of operation between 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m., Monday through Saturday, closed Sunday. The building, the architecture of the building is somewhat residential in nature, it's kind of a cross between commercial and residential. You can see in your packets, you have some of the same things, and so it's a lower-profile building, it looks a bit like a ranch home with some storefront windows and so on. It is proposed, the siding itself is going to be a combination of LP smart side, vertical textured LP smart side, and some horizontal vinyl siding, the roof would be asphalt shingles, and so the Plan Commission ultimately will need to determine if the proposed materials are appropriate for a commercial building, as required in our ordinance. All the HVAC equipment that's outdoors is going to be stored on the north side of the building, behind fencing and landscaping, the storage and garbage bins will be located. The northeast corner behind the gate fenced enclosure as well. In terms of landscaping, I won't go into all the details now, but we do have landscape points that are required for building foundations, street frontages, parking lots, et cetera. They have exceeded all the landscaping requirements for the site plan at this time. If there are questions, we can address those. In addition, the lighting plan shows zero-foot candles at all property lines, which is also In terms of parking, they are providing... They're providing 43 spaces, though the building footprint is 4,600 square feet, requires 27 spaces. We know that there's 19 stylists potentially at any one time, and they're clients. The petitioner states that, so if every stylist had a client in the chair and one waiting, potentially, there might not be enough, however, what's required per the ordinance is only 27 spaces, so the Plan Commission should weigh in and determine if the parking spaces as proposed are sufficient. There's no signage proposed at this time, they are showing some conceptual signage on the building, but nothing is proposed now, they have to come back for signage. They're currently working with Waukesha County for stormwater management at the northwest corner of the site as well. And so that brings us to sort of the bigger issue, and that's traffic circulation and access, and if you look at the overhead... This was a CSM that was done in 1998. There are Lot 2 of the CSM, Lot 1 is right to the east of them, there's an existing residence that's on that property. And so as part of that land division, one of the requirements was, access from 164 was eliminated, and then most of the access from Lawnsdale Road was eliminated. There was essentially an easement across this property with the home that would require the subject property to use that driveway and access easement to get out to Lawnsdale Road, pretty much keeping traffic as far enough away from 164 as possible with the creation of that lot. I'm just going to pull up the CSM. So this is the document, again, recorded in 1998. Here's the subject property, here's the lot with the residence to the east. Here's the, basically, a space for reservation of future roadway acquisition for the highway. The setbacks in the property have to be at least 50 feet from that potential acquisition area, which they do comply with, but this dash line that you can see here along, on Lawnsdale Road, and it goes up 164, that's the no-direct vehicular access zone, and so, as you can see, it extends all the way to the eastern part of the property with the residence, and so the driveway easement comes through, and then their access would be there. The petitioner would, you know, that would be fine if the residence to the east was a commercial use already, but it's a residence, people live there, and so the traffic for this particular use would need to come through across the property, and so the petitioner would rather have access located closer to their property line. They have spoken with Waukesha County Public Works about this, and I've been told that they are in favor of that, that they would be willing to modify the CSM in order to remove the access restriction or move it back so that they could base, they wouldn't have access on their property, but it would be on the neighbor's property and just kind of skirt it and then get them access. That would require cooperation from the property owner to the east, and I know the petitioner has spoken to them, I'm not sure how far those talks have gone, but that's sort of the crux of the issue here is, you know, how does this new commercial development get access to Lawnsdale Road, and what's best for both properties? So Chris, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Thank you, Sean, I have six comments. The first is just basically a series of permits that I see them needing to obtain and provide to the village. The second, the site plan needs to show a little more dimensioning, there are some parking lot drive aisles and stalls and sidewalks and things like that that don't have dimensions, so when the time comes for a final site plan submission, those should be shown. I guess similar to what Sean was describing with access, current access is kind of a T-turnaround with the existing driveway, and there's some turning movements and things of that nature that I have a problem with, that I don't think are out of, you know, not doable or anything, but I think we, those need to be addressed, and it sounds like they're working towards that with their discussions with the county. I'll kind of skip down to five, we need to show septic and well locations and where those will be. Item six, the CSM indicates that an amendment was created that includes restrictions for the driveway access easement that Sean was just discussing, however, I don't think those, that amendment was submitted for our review, so, oh, yeah. So I think that's about all we have at this time.
Why don't we, at this point in time, invite the petitioners to come back up? I'm sure there are going to be a lot of questions and comments from the Plan Commission and Board, but why don't you come up, and if you have anything to, if you want to add? If not, we get another introduction coming, do we, please?
Yes, Attorney Tim Endring, I'm with the law firm of Crerham-Waltoff &amp; Hammus. I'll answer any legal issues if you have them, so I'll be sitting on the sidelines here, but as for the easement issue, if it comes up, I'll address any legal issues with respect.
All right, thanks. You guys might want to pick that microphone up just a little bit, feel free to do that, and then if you, you're not compelled to speak at this time, but if you have anything that you want to add or correct in terms of staff reports, go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much for your time and your review, and Sean, good to see you again, it's been a while, it's on yesterday. So, in the grand scheme of things, we're here for, conceptually, we've been working with the county extensively, I think some to some of your concerns, we don't have exact measurements or well locations, all that stuff yet, we certainly will come back and provide that information. We've, I think this is revision number eight or nine, we've gone through this extensively, I know when I say we've had more than a few meetings with the county, we've had more than a dozen conversations with the county about access. We do have emails from the county, obviously, they're reluctant to say we give you 100% approval, because we need to get approval from this group before we can go to the county and say, here's the plan, can we get approval, and then they'll grant it, but we do have emails from the county saying that they acknowledge and have been in discussions with us, and that they don't have any issues with option A or B of the driveway location. Obviously, the property was sold to our client, Mr. Zerpley, and we're just trying to get access to that. Because of the easement, we're open to option A or B, we just thought that option A wasn't good for the resident, and quite honestly, wasn't as attractive for our user, so we tried to work with the county on several different options, and ultimately came to thinking that option B might be the best for all parties involved.
Okay, thank you. I want to just back up a half step real quickly, as I understand, this is on the agenda, we're not looking to take any kind of formal action tonight, but we're looking for feedback, expressions of concerns, comments, and that type of thing, to give the petitioner some sense of direction. Is that appropriate, explained?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so guys, why don't you hang on a bit, and again, this is a joint meeting, so questions or comments from Plan, Commission, Town, or rather Village Board members? Who wants to go first?
Mr. President, I've got a couple.
Mr. White, please.
I guess I'd be all in favor of having the modifier CSM for driveway access. I guess I'd be in favor of going that route, if you would go forward on that, is my opinion. The other thing you had, parking lot, parking stalls that you had, I know if you had everybody there, and like Sean was saying, one in the chair, Wayne, one, they might be a hair short on parking, I just wanted to make, think about it, see if you wanted to add more. Obviously, you meet the code for what you have to have, but I maybe recommend if you squeeze a couple more, and if you had the room, I'd recommend that. And then for the building exterior, I guess we'll get into that in a little bit of the materials on the outside of the building.
Okay, who's next?
Could you, maybe Sean, walk through A and B again, so I know exactly what they're talking about, and then I have a follow-up question from Mr. Brandon.
Sure, the option A was represented as the existing access that's on the CSM, which would require them to go across the access easement, entirely across the neighbor's property, and then head into their property to the west. Option B is the...
That is the easement. A is the easement as it was designed and approved back in the late 90s, I think you said?
Right.
I just want to be sure about, okay, thank you.
Can I just ask?
That doesn't exist. This does not exist. For whatever reason, after it was approved, nobody followed through with the village/town at the time to make sure that this was done. So what we have is a CSM approved with the driveway easement here. In order to, this was one lot, obviously, the village approved the division of the lot, and the current property owner that did the CSM is the owner of this lot.
Okay, that's very helpful.
So I can second that, I did look for the addendum myself, I couldn't find it anywhere, I know the petitioners looked for it.
We had a title search done as well, it doesn't exist.
Okay, and I just want to make sure, I just wanted to make sure that A, because obviously it's straight lines on the other document, and it's curved lines on this one, and I just, that's not, that's just...
Right, so the easement is basically like this, across the property.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to make a big deal out of that, I just wanted to make sure that we all knew what A was, and it is purportedly to be consistent with the rights that were granted to this property owner when the CSM occurred. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, Chris. Mr. Stigler, you had a question, and I'll wait if you want to ask your question.
Well, I was getting to the part about the, the one that comes out of their private driveway next to, is approved, that was what, is that on record as being the...
That is the recorded existing situation right now, yes.
Okay. So we have to, we can determine whether we want that driveway upheld, or we want to move it to the west?
It's ultimately up to the property owner of Lot 1, what they would like to do. If they don't want to modify the CSM, because this would be modifying the access easement on their property, then that's the way it's got to be.
Well, this is their right, A, that's the point I was trying to make, the petitioners are all shaking their head, so Mr. Stigler, just so you understood, that's their right, that's what the bill, the town at the time approved, that they would have to come across the front of their driveway and exit where his existing driveway was, is that the intent? Mr. Endring, is that what you believe? They showed the easement, the whole length of it.
Well, that, it's not just the intent, that's what's there.
Yeah, but could, do you read, okay, that's what's there, I'll stop there, but the county, because Lawnsdale Road is a county trunk highway, I assume, the county, Mr. Stigler, is really the one who's going to have some, the major say over whether that existing driveway can be moved.
Exactly, and that's where I was heading with this question, is that a doable thing or not?
So, I would have thought, no, because it has to be 100 feet. The county, however, has said yes.
The county has said yes?
The county has said yes. They have not finalized, however, saying yes, because they don't want to go that far with their yes, other than the letter saying, we're aware of option A and option B, we prefer option B, and we're amenable to option B, which is shifting it to the west. But they haven't approved option B, because their feeling is this, you're the horse, they're the cart, they're not going to put the cart before the horse, they're going to wait for you to say, we approve this development, and we approve option B, and then the county says they will offer their approval thereafter.
So I'm assuming at this point, everybody's on board, basically, at the length of people in the House, and you guys are all on board with going with option B.
I am not here to tell you that the people with the House, the people with the House, from what I understand, are saying they don't want option A or B.
So, can I just...
No, I got to ask my follow-up question, if I may. Does B contemplate the elimination of the existing driveway? The documentation is not clear, and that's where I was really headed, I wanted to understand A and B before I asked that question, so Mr. Dur, if you don't mind, that was...
Same question I was going to ask. Okay, no, this would be eliminated. Yeah, it says remove existing driveway here.
Okay, that's hard for me to see.
Remove existing driveway here, and so this would come here, and they would use their driveway to get back here, and this would go into the salon.
So they both come in together at the lot line, so to speak, which is very typical, more typical when you do a...
You only get one access point onto Lawnsdale.
So either way, there's only one.
Either way, there's only one. This gets eliminated if this gets built, otherwise, this gets built and this gets eliminated, and we stay with what exists.
All right, let's...
The simple matter is, this is not as good an option for the homeowner, this is a much better option for the homeowner, this has been zoned commercial now on your...
Land use.
Land use plan for more than 20 years, I believe. So this has been B-2 on your proposed land use plan for 20 years.
To clarify, it's on the land use plan as commercial, they're asking for a rezoning to B-2.
Sure. Let's maybe, just a kind of suggestion, and we've got a lot of things in play here, and again, we're not taking a formal action, but just pose things in terms of a couple of questions, again, this is what you're proposing, the proposed use and the proposed rezoning are consistent with our land use plan to put it into B-2 zoning, just kind of take an issue at the time, is there anybody on the Plan Commission or the Board who wouldn't be in concept supportive of the rezoning of this, so it would be consistent with our land use plan? Does anybody have any reservation conceptually about that at all? Go.
If I could just add a little note to that, this would be a rezoning, so when we do rezonings, we look at the land use plan, and if it's commercial, you say, hey, this is probably a good candidate for a commercial rezoning, however, you're not obligated to rezone something just because the land use plan says "commercial," if you felt, for whatever reason, that the condition here was untenable, or wasn't currently compatible with the surroundings, et cetera, and so, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of the development, I think it's a nice development, I think it would look, it'd be a great addition to the Village of Waukesha, but it's not as cut and dry as, you know, just because the plan says "commercial," means that you have to entertain a rezon to "commercial," unless these issues can be resolved.
I think we understand that, maybe just even a follow-up question, the existing residence to the east there, is that, what does the, what does the land use plan speak to? I think, I think we understand that. Maybe just even a follow-up question. The existing residence to the east there, is that, what does the, what does the land use plan speak to with regard to that piece of property?
It's commercial. The entire northeast quadrant is, is planned for a commercial.
Is the, that thing you got right up on the board there, I mean, the, the brown part is commercial, right where you hit your cursor there? Is that the east side of the residential property? Is there something else in there? How, how far back does the east side of the residential property go?
So the property lines aren't shown, but the property in question, our subject property is here. The residence right next to it is, is right here.
And there's additional land to the east of the residence yet?
Currently being farmed.
Correct.
Okay.
It's currently for sale for commercial property as well.
Okay, and, and Planner Malarkey made a good point, and I mean, it's not a fait accompli that that has to be commercial or what or not, but just so we can kind of take an issue at a time. Does anybody have a vision for that other than the commercial designation we got on our land use plan, which could lead to a rezoning for a B two use?
I have no problem with it being rezoned. My only question is, is, does somebody live in that residence now? Did, and did I just hear you that it's up for sale? Is that it?
No, the property for sale is the larger, the larger property surrounding.
Oh, I see, thank you.
Okay, then just to kind of move this along, I'm assuming, anybody got any great concern about that expressed? If not, then I guess moving on to the other thing, and I understand, Mr. Andrew, and appreciated kind of the, you know, the chicken or the egg, or the horse or the cart type of thing. This is not on our agenda for any kind of formal action tonight, but is, is the consensus to go with driveway option B? Do we think that's preferable to A, and understanding you get one access point?
Well, the statement was made that the landowner to the east was in favor of A or B.
That's correct.
What do we know what they're in?
Well, they're here tonight, so I assume they can speak to it if you want to allow them to speak to it. I'm not saying you have to or what have you, but I'm here because obviously there's a legal issue, and you can't have created a, a landlocked parcel. So the landowner now of this lot has every right to use that lot, consistent with your land use plan, and will be able to use that lot, consistent with your land use plan, via the easement, option A or option B. Obviously, you need cooperation with the property owner to move it to option B.
Okay.
If it is a commercial area, we do need to look at the whole entire area also there.
Yeah, and you were wondering, Ms. Sizney?
Yes.
This is, this is the 25 acres that is being up for sale right now as commerc- uh, commercial? Yes. And this is where, this is that strip that's residential.
So for Mr. Macy, so the easement gives, for lack of a better description, the salon property the right to use it as it's documented now, is that right?
As it's, do you mean as proposed to be used or as vacant land?
Well, there's an existing easement, right?
Yes.
On the property where the house is.
Yes.
That gives the property owner of the salon property the right to put the driveway on that existing easement now, without the existing property owner's additional permission, right? I, I just want to make sure I'm in-
Looking at only what we have in front of us and what the research the planner has done, that's what it appears. I have no reason to believe that's not true.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to figure out who has what rights here.
Right. Right now, my client can tonight drive onto there and drive across here. They have every legal right to. They're the owner of this property. She sold it to them, and-
Do you understand what I mean? Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. But in our documents, and I don't think this is material, and they didn't have the public hearing, the property owner will have a chance to talk later. But it would be uncommon for us to suspend the rules to hear from the public now when there's going to be a public hearing to the rezoning. But I want to make sure we get at least the representations made tonight, because the purpose tonight, in part, is to say, when you come back, bring back this kind of information, okay? That's what we use these preliminary, now, we can't use these for conditional uses anymore, but we can still use these for rezoning, okay? More for master plan amendments, you can use conceptual. The property next door is, is under the title on the tax key bill as Lori Lindner, and you bought it from Gene, according to the document. So I don't want to say that there's a misrepresentation, but I don't want any confusion when we come back to the next hearing.
We did buy that, what I'm saying is lot owner one, Lori Lindner created lot two.
And then she sold it to Gene Lindner?
And she sold it to her mother.
Okay.
And then mother sold it to my client.
So there actually is a third party. There is another party in between. Lori created the two lots.
Yes.
It's, I just, we'll get all of this at the public hearing, and I'm sure, and then she sold it to her mother, and you bought it from the mother.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just, there were two different names in the file, and I wanted to make sure we understood that. If you need more clarification, I'm sure it'll come out at the public.
Who else has a question or comment? Commissioner Bukos, please.
With regard to the access, fire code requires two accesses to commercial property, and we only have one. The first one, Plan A is really difficult for emergency vehicles to negotiate. Just a heads up, that's going to create some problems. And what is the plan for a second access?
I, I, I can speak to that, that I did ask them to put an additional lane here, so when the property to the north is developed, that they'd be able to connect with that, with that driveway. Now, the details of the easement and who maintains it and who connects it is not yet resolved, but I did suggest, because I knew that was, gave me one of your concerns, that, that they provide a, a potential future second access when the rest of this running property develops.
And I guess my concern is, is that we should have some sort of a plan for how this larger piece of property in the future could be developed. I think there needs to be some conversation with the state of Wisconsin. I think there needs to be conversation with Waukesha County, where roads are going to be able to access major arteries and where they're not going to be able to. I said it, it's, I mean, we could end up with a, a street going there that's a cul-de-sac and no access to this property whatsoever.
Okay, that's a great point. That's what I said about when you come back, share with us what, if any, research you've been able to do in that regard. The Bellmans own the property, that's according to the tax records, and that's the kind of comment we really appreciate, so they can be prepared. They're not to address it tonight, because you've got to get all this stuff in the public hearing anyway, and it's best if you raise those concerns, ask staff or the petitioners to look at it. Thank you, Chief. That's exactly the kind of comment we want to hear from the plan commissioners or the board members. When you come back, please address this issue.
If, if I could hitchhike on that, I guess I would like to see just exactly what Commissioner Bukos was saying. I'd like to see that basically reduced to a drawing in terms of what is permissible in terms of access points, particularly along Highway 164. I mean, we want to see the bigger picture of this.
We did talk to the county about that. Along 164, you would have to go quite a bit north before you can even get to-
There's a median, it's, is it here?
That's the intersection you can access that site. So you'd have to purchase the properties of the north and the ones that's currently for sale.
I guess, and I, I appreciate your representation about that. Again, I would like to see that reduced to a drawing.
Is there access off of, is that Big Ben Road here? Is this for sale? Is that part of the 25?
This is, this is the 25 here.
It's unusable, but it's for sale with it. So there, that's, that may be low?
Well, again, yeah.
All right, so we're, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to solve this tonight, but I think the big picture, part of it, we're trying to take a global perspective. I mean, just even taking a step back from it, I mean, I'm completely supportive of the proposal to develop this piece of property. We've got to get into the details, but we need to be able to see a bigger picture part of this, so we don't end up down the line that some future, future board says, what were they thinking at that time? Sean?
So, I just, I just want to ask, so I'm clear. So we know that the state is not going to allow another access point until you get pretty far north. There's, there's likely going to be another county access point somewhere over here for this property, right? And so the idea is, is that this property would come in and circulate and probably come back out. The idea that I, what I mentioned with the petitioners, that, hey, you get an access point here, please connect to this. When we review whatever development would happen with this property, we would ensure that they connect to, to our property as well, so it, so it does connect through there, and then they get one access point here. So I don't know if the Bellmans are, know what they want to do with their property yet, but beyond those two points, I'm not sure what else, what else needs to come back.
They're going to say as a condition of this rezoning, they're going to do an official map and show where the roads have to be on the Bellman property. They have the right to do that as a condition of the rezoning.
Sure.
I mean, I would like to see-
Is that what, is that, is that what?
Say, when the Bellman property develops, it has to have, at a minimum, this road.
That, that's fine, but the direction was not that. The direction was come back with a map that shows where the, where the points are. And so I just wanted more information as to-
I, I don't know that that's completely different. I don't, for my purposes, I don't, I don't think we're looking for a complete internal circulation plan for that piece of property, but what we need to know, how many access points are allowable on Highway 164 there? I mean, we've been through this before. That's going to be dictated by the state DOT. They're not, they're not going to yield to our preferences. I mean, I have no idea. Will they allow an access directly cost from the church? Can you have two of them or three of them or whatever, and we just can't do the same words? We've got to see this in picture form. I mean, not, I kind of appreciate the county saying, we've got to get a commitment from the village before we'll address that issue formally. Well, I mean, it was kind of a cart before the horse kind of thing. We need to have the totality of this so we can make a smart decision. I think, aren't we all on the same page on that?
All right, yes, agreed. I guess we're, you know, again, it's conceptual. Is anybody against the conceptual concept of it? Is anybody against the rezoning of it? Hands down, that's what we're trying to make sure. We're not wasting anybody's time, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we kind of asked, and asked another question. Did you have something more?
Oh, no, sorry.
Anybody else? I mean, kind of around the, around the room, is it premature to talk anything at this point in time, and we've got a concept of what the building would be? I know we're looking for additional information. Is it premature to have any of that discussion tonight or not?
We're good on the engineering. We had that discussion.
Okay.
So, thank you again, everyone.
Let me, do you want to see letters from the county? Do you want somebody here from the county? Just so we don't go round and around and get adjourned. We, I've been here long enough to know, if you're thinking in your head something specific when it comes to this plan, other than a sketch and their representations, could we verbalize that so they can be prepared?
What I'm looking for is a drawing, and, and maybe that's backed up, not that we're, I don't know whose work product that is, but I, we're looking for, I guess, representation from the state and the county in terms of what is permissible, in terms of number and location of points of access. I, I think it would be good to have that in words and put on a drawing as well. That's my belief. Anybody else?
No, I, I got to agree with that. I guess we went through this before with the property to the north of this, as far as access on 164 goes, and I think we need to clarify that here right away before we make any decisions, but I'm all for the building here, and, and the, the zoning and stuff change. I'm, I'm fine with that on 164. That's kind of what we've always planned on doing, so whether we can work this out with the access problems and things like that, I'm, I think it's a good thing.
So that give you enough sense of direction to the petitioner tonight?
Yes.
Yep. Is there anything else that anybody else would like to give them in terms of sense of direction? Chief Bukos? No? One other thing downstream, but when we get to it, just because it's downstream, but the building and that type of thing, I would like to even see samples of building materials. I know you put some of those things on the drawing in color and everything. We've talked about this with other petitioners. I mean, give you an opportunity to think about that. For my part, I would actually like to see just some physical samples. I think it'd be helpful.
That's right. We conceptually wanted to know what, what the, what the commission and board thought about the access points, and now that we've cleared our direction as to when we come back, we can come back with a complete plan, an engineer plan, and finishes and things like that.
Anything else on this item tonight?
Good night, everyone.
If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we will soldier on then to next item on our agenda, which is, oop, I got to back up on some more. All right, item next is, hang on just a second here.
Can I just say something about this last meeting that we just had? I'm the house owner. No, we're done?
Sorry, not. Tonight, we'll give you an opportunity. Appreciate you being here, but not tonight. There will, this goes forward to be public hearing and everything. You have an opportunity at that time.
Just consider people driving through somebody's front yard, you know, that's all I'm asking, please. And a commercial driveway, I mean, where am I supposed to park? Where am I supposed to park?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, we're not going to entertain those comments tonight, and you'll certainly have an opportunity to that going forward. All right, run to item eight then, discussion only on Village of Waukesha Shoreland zoning, including a shoreline zoning overlay district and a shoreline wetland zoning ordinance. Sean, is this you again?
It is me. It's, this is just an introduction to the, the shoreline zoning stuff. As you know, similar to what we did for the floodplain ordinance, now that we're a village, we need to have our own shoreline zoning in place. It's currently, it was under the jurisdiction of Waukesha County. We currently administer their shoreline ordinances since becoming a village. So we've been working with the DNR, much like we did with the floodplain ordinance, to get drafts of the shoreline zoning in place. What I submitted for everyone's review is basically four documents. One is an overview from the DNR as to what shoreline zoning standards apply to villages or cities and sort of what the requirements are for those. We have different requirements than things, than the county has. The county has more restrictive provisions that have to be in their shoreline zoning than, than we do as a village. For instance, we have to allow certain setbacks for structures and certain exceptions, but the county is required to do a vegetative buffer zone within 35 feet of the ordinary high water mark that we do not have to do. The draft that you have does include that, but just for reference, it's just, there, there are different standards. So that's the first document. The second document is-
Can I comment on that for a second?
Sure can.
Sure, go.
When the village of Summit faced the same issue, they gave a policy to their planner that you give all, as many rights and opportunities to the property owners, and you do not include any of the county restrictions that are not required to be included by a village. I'm not telling you you should do that or not do that, but it's very helpful if you give some sort of guidance in that regard. If you, you have several options. It's very difficult to be more restrictive, I believe, correct?
Yes.
In this, in this code. You could say, we, we lived under county all of these years, and we want to continue to live under county unless we see issues, and as those issues come up, we'll deal with them and make amendments at that time. Or you give the direction, take out everything that the county is required to have and we're not required to have, and, and we'll be only as restrictive as the village needs to be. Those are, you can tweak it and have a high breadth. Those are sort of the extent, and it's really helpful as if, if you at least think about that and you give us some guidance. Does, does that, at least, concept make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I think it does. I can maybe just even back up half a step for a minute, explain to people where in the Village of Waukesha would shoreline zoning, whatever they be, regulations apply. I mean, that might be helpful to people.
And I was just about to get into that with the, with the shoreline zoning overlay district. Essentially, shoreline zoning applies within 300 feet of all navigable rivers and streams, and 1,000 feet of all lakes, ponds, and flowages. And so, from the, measured from the ordinary high water mark of those bodies. They have to be determined navigable, and it's from the ordinary high water mark. And so those boundaries all exist now in the Village of Waukesha, and it's just administered under the county's shoreline jurisdiction. So the first piece, there's basically two pieces to this. The first piece is an overlay district. It fits right into our zoning code, just like our high groundwater overlay, our environmental corridor overlay. It, the base zoning shines through. So if you're zoned R1, you're still zoned R1, but this applies within 300 or 1,000 feet, depending if it's near a river or a, or a lake. And all the shoreline overlay district really does is it sets up a setback from the water body. So it's, it's, what's, what's required by the county is 75 feet from the ordinary high water mark, and that's what the draft that you have in front of you also says. You do not have to be that restrictive. You can be less restrictive than that. DNR does allow you to go closer to the water's edge than 75 feet, but that's what the county's used, that's what we've used all along, that's what our wetland setback is. But that's what the county's used, that's what we've used all along, that's what our wetland setback is. So it's consistent with the wetland setback, which makes some sense. The other thing, again, it does, so that's, that's really all it does is establish the setbacks and the provisions that are in here. There's, there's the setbacks from water, and there's some exceptions that are built in. I've taken the county's ordinance and I've, I've simplified some of those exceptions and, and put them into our ordinance. So for instance, um, it says all buildings and structures setback at least seventy-five feet from the ordinary high, high watermark, except as follows. So there's certain structures that can be closer to it, but not closer than thirty-five feet. And those are basically things that are two hundred square feet or less and, and has no, um, no sides or has open or screen size, like gazebos or decks or those kind of structures can be closer than seventy-five, but not closer than thirty-five. A single stairway railway system or walkway that could get down to the water's edge, um, utility lines, et cetera, stormwater structures. And then there's also provisions in there to average your building setback. So your house, for instance, could be closer than seventy-five feet to the water's edge if there were buildings on each side of you that were already closer than seventy-five feet. So there's provisions in there that you get to average it out based on if there's two buildings on either side within two hundred fifty feet of you, within the seventy-five feet, or if there's one building on one side.
Can we go back first? Do we have any lakes?
No, this is, this is almost, this is almost non-applicable in most locations and.
I just want to go back to the bill of the president's question, and you jumped ahead a little bit. So we have a river.
There's a river, right.
We have a river or two that runs through.
There might, there might be small ponds. There, there are small ponds and things that are determined navigable because they do connect with, with rivers and streams that are determined to be navigable.
Do you have a map, the county map that you could show them? I wanted to finish your question, Mr. President, before, I'm sorry, Sean, I.
No, that's great. That's a great point. How does it apply in?
To see who this, we have a, a map.
Yeah, we're not, we're not a lake community, so this applies much, this is almost, this is used a lot less than, than other places. But obviously in the Village of Waukesha, there aren't any big lakes, right? And so there's the river, the Fox River, and its tributaries and streams. But in terms of actual lakes, there's, you know, there's small ponds and things. If I turn on the county shoreline, which is under their jurisdiction now, you can see where it applies. And so here's the river. Anywhere you see color basically is where shoreline zoning or flood, or the floodplain zoning currently applies. But, um, for instance, this pond here isn't navigable. It's not within shoreline zoning. There's the, there's the Fox River. Here's a couple of small ponds that are within that area that are, that are, um, subject to the, the restrictions. But there are very few homes or buildings or structures that are near the water's edge. And in most cases with the Fox River, for instance, there's a, there's a big floodplain that's associated with it too. And so you can't, you can't even get within that boundary. So this is still applicable to the Village of Waukesha, but much less so than, say, a lake community.
So I cut you off. You were going to things that you had already changed from the county.
I, I did. I did. And I, and so as, as, as a starting point, I've, I've simplified some of their conditions and, and put them in our, in our ordinance based on the DNR's model for, for consideration. And some of those things are, again, the, the principal structure setbacks when you're within two hundred fifty feet of your neighbors' structures, and they're already within seventy-five feet. Do I know if that applies anywhere in the village? I don't know. I haven't done the math. I haven't gone through it. But this is currently what's in the county's ordinance in a simplified form. It's also in our zoning ordinance now, applicable to wetlands. So we have the same provisions applicable to wetlands. So we do allow you to be closer to the wetlands, no closer than thirty-five feet, if your neighbors are already closer to those wetlands. So just food for thought. And then finally, vegetative removal. This is the thing that villages are not required to have in their code. Uh, and so what the county requires is they establish a thirty-five foot strip along the, along the waterways and, and simply require that sixty-five percent of that, whatever vegetation's there, has to be maintained. You're allowed to do thirty-five percent access in viewing corridor, so you can remove trees up to thirty-five percent of your exposure to the waterway. And then you can remove vegetation, you can do routine maintenance. Any removal of dead vegetation or that kind of a thing has to be replaced within the, within that buffer area as well. And then any removal would have to comply with erosion control and any other district that we have, um, in zoning. So that's essentially it, um, for that overlay district. There's some definitions that go along with it. These definitions, because this is an overlay district, are going to be moved to our standard definitions within the zoning. We already have a definition for principal building, but we need to add shorelands and shoreline setback area. So before I move on to the other ordinance, which is the shoreline-wetland ordinance, does anyone have any questions or comments? Or do you want to digest it for, for next meeting?
I, I just got one comment and, and some of this, and maybe you had an interview, but this, this is about vegetation removal and so forth. I think you mentioned there's a, this thirty-five foot.
Strip.
Strip comes into, I mean, just even as a frame of reference, that's about the width of this room, is what we're talking about in terms of the controlled area from the.
We have to maintain, we have to maintain that buffer, correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions before he proceeds? Go ahead.
All right, so the second part of this to shoreline zoning is the shoreline-wetland district. And that's based on NR one seventeen. And this ordinance will be very similar to our floodplain ordinance. It's going to be a standalone ordinance that, that's in our code of ordinance, but it's not in our zoning code. It's its own zoning ordinance, just like the floodplain is its own zoning ordinance. Where it still overlaps our current zoning districts, but the more restrictive the two always applies in this case. And so what the shoreline-wetland ordinance is for is it recognizes all the DNR, uh, wetlands from the, from the wetland inventory within the three hundred feet of rivers and streams and a thousand feet of lakes and ponds. And so there's special rules for those wetlands with inside that buffer. And so this is, this is basically the permitted uses, what you can and can't do within those wetlands, what's required to, to basically change them, to zone them out if you wanted to fill them and other things. It's, it's its own standalone ordinance in that regard. And I haven't, there's not much changed here except for, um, minor things that, uh, apply to the village. This is basically the, the DNR's model ordinance for shoreline-wetland districts. The one thing we did change is that they, they allow for conditional uses in the wetland districts. So some things are permitted by, by right, and that's, that's, uh, very minor things like. Let me get to the section. Permitted uses like hiking, fishing, trapping, harvesting of wild crops, practice of silviculture, et cetera, et cetera. Those, pasturing of livestock, all that stuff is allowed without a permit in these wetlands. There are also things that do require a permit, which, um, are such things as like a, a road that was a village road that had to go through a wetland that had no other place to go, could be permitted through, through a particular wetland. Construction and maintenance of non-residential buildings, um, used in conjunction with raising of waterfall, minerals, et cetera. Not to exceed five hundred square feet, development of public and private parks, uh, construction and maintenance of utilities. And that's about it. And everything else is prohibited. There's a provision in here that does allow for conditional uses, and there's a process for conditional uses, but we've explicitly put in the ordinance that no conditional uses are currently permitted, to be, to be clear. So that's the gist of this ordinance.
Did you cover, Sean, again, I don't mean there, but did you cover how this has to be done and the time?
I have not done that yet, no.
This is not.
Not the end of the story, no.
I mean, no, but this is not if you want to do it.
Right.
They have.
Much like the floodplain ordinance, you have to, because you're a village, you are required by the state to adopt shoreline zoning in a shoreline-wetland district. The, the next step, we could, you know, you can, we can come back and talk about this conceptually again if you'd like. We could bring it back for a public hearing. At some point, it needs to go for, be noticed for public hearing and, and be adopted. The other piece of the puzzle is the shoreline-wetland map. And so the county currently maintains the Village of Waukesha's map. All the areas that are sort of blotted out in white for shoreline zoning on the map will become colored. We will adopt the same zoning districts that they have because they correspond with our zoning districts, except for some pro, there are some properties in the village that have split zoning between Waukesha, the Village of Waukesha and Waukesha County. There's not that many. The county's working on generating a list for me. But when we adopt this, I'd like to have it so there's no split zoning across properties. And so each property is fully zoned R1, whether it's in shoreline or not in shoreline, across that entire property. So we'll be looking at some maps, um, hopefully next month, uh, coming back. And I don't think there's that many properties to go through. But when we do adopt this through public hearing, we'll also be adopting the maps to go along with it.
Couple of takeaways. If people call you, if they're in shoreline now, they'll stay in shoreline. If they're not in shoreline, they're not going to be in shoreline.
Correct.
So it's not a change.
No boundaries are being changed.
Okay, so that's the first thing. If they ask about the restrictions, the draft that, as I understand the planner just said, loosens the restrictions, it does not increase the restrictions.
Correct. The restrictions are loosened from the county. The county, for instance, the vegetative buffer requirements for the county are pages and pages long about plans that have to be submitted. It's, it's, if that's the way you want to go, I would be happy to do that. And the other document that you have that I didn't mention, uh, it's the highlighted one where it's pages from the county shoreline ordinance. Those are some of the exceptions that they allow, and also some of the vegetative buffer standards that they require as part of that. So take a look at that to see if, you know, if, if you're of a mind to be more restrictive or not.
Okay, and I want to clarify, more restrictive is not more restrictive than they're currently living under.
Correct.
Understood.
There is no goal to put anybody under greater restriction than they currently have. The current draft is lesser restrictions, but nobody else is being affected in any way. This could get very scary to people if they get a notice or read in the paper that the shoreline, they look at the map, they see you're in shoreline.
Right.
You just have to make sure you're the experts and you understand at least the basics.
That's correct. They're, they're, they are, there's no more restrictions being put on them than there currently are, only, only fewer. And in fact, it's simpler because we're administering it all. It's our own in-house ordinance. There's no need to go to the county and the, and the village. And so that was obviously resolved as part of becoming a village.
Sure. Question, I have a, a question in that regard, and it's kind of a timing or big picture thing. So we understand the reason this is before us now. It's all about our successful incorporation. That's why we're here.
Correct.
Right? Are we, are, is there currently a shoreline ordinance? I mean, we're still, are we still under the county's ordinance until we adopt our own?
That's right. We, as a village, have the responsibility to administer their ordinance. So if people come to us for permits, I look at their ordinance, see if it complies or not. So we are administering theirs, and we adopt this, we'll be administering ours.
So we became, effectively becoming a village, we became the administrator of it.
That's right.
We're administering their ordinance at this point in time, and we're looking at adopting our own and modifying it as we would see fit.
Correct.
So maybe even going back to a question that I think Attorney Macy kind of started us with. Are we looking to, I mean, better words, but ease some of the restrictions that are in the county's current ordinance that we've been under for a significant period of time? Maybe it could be more artfully said, but that's the essence. Your first question wasn't Attorney Macy?
Yes, just a general policy. You want to live under county rules, or you want to defer to the planner to show you which ones we can lessen up, and he's recommending we reduce the restrictions.
Yeah, and if I could just quickly speak to that, what I tried to do is walk a fine line. I tried to put enough exception, I put exceptions in here that gave people options on how they, how they work with their structures and, and give them some options for exceptions for their setback. But I, I think it's important to include some type of vegetative buffer at the shoreline. And so that's why I've incorporated some. However, they're, they're much more easy to work with than what the county has in terms of requirements. So that, that's what I tried to do in the draft.
Let me make a suggestion, see if people want to weigh in on that. Not tonight, but if it's going to come back. Maybe it comes back to the plan commission, the board, and maybe you go through those one by one. I mean, you've basically spent a lot of time with this. You're the professional. Show us what recommendation you could make and then see if that has concurrence with the plan commission and the board. Would that be a, a way to approach it? Looking for other suggestions, but is.
No, I think that's the right way to go. I said, cut back what doesn't pertain to us and, and bring those to us next time.
Well, you have them. They're in there.
Oh, okay.
My recommendations are in.
But I mean, you could, not necessarily tonight, big picture, but you could kind of quickly walk through that and, and basically give your thought behind it.
Yeah, if you wanted to do some homework, you could look at the mark, the highlighted few pages from the county's ordinance. That's the current exceptions and vegetative buffer requirements that are in their ordinance.
That's the yellow part?
For comparison, yes. That's, and that's currently in there. And then in the overlay district, that's the Act eighty version, the overlay district. At the end, I have the exceptions and then the vegetative removal requirements. And so if you, if you kind of just look at it and compare the two, you get a sense of the difference.
So the highlighted area is the.
That's the county, that's, those are the county's exceptions and vegetative buffer, yeah.
Okay, other questions, comments, directions for staff? Commissioner Bukols?
I spent quite a bit of time reading this thing. Let me tell you, I lost sleep too.
Yeah, it's, it's not the most interesting thing.
But they, um, I do like what he put in there for, for a, a buffer. You can't get rid of it completely. Back in another life, I had to deal with the situation of the community south of here, where they did strip that thirty-five feet completely, and it was a real nightmare, um, related to a lot of issues that affected the water itself, the water body itself. So we do have to have some of that buffer in there. We got to maintain that in some sort, I think, reducing.
How cumbersome it is.
Restrictions on it a little bit is worthwhile. I don't know, I went through this whole document, and I'm pretty satisfied with, with what you're showing so far.
So it's going to come back. No matter what, we have to talk about the maps. So before we schedule a public hearing, we have to do that. So take your time, take a look at it before next plan commission meeting, if you haven't done so already. And we can, we can discuss it again at, at the April meeting.
All right, thanks. Anything further on this issue tonight? Okay, then if there isn't item nine as adjournment of the plan commission, is there a motion to adjourn? I had that by Commissioner Bukols. Is there a second to adjourn the plan commission meeting?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Sizny, um, all in favor of adjourned the plan commission meeting at seven thirty-six PM? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So that passes unanimously. Thank you. Plan commissioners, um, if everybody's okay, I think we'll just move along. Hopefully we can finish quickly. So the continuation of the board meeting here, village board, item ten is discussion possible action. We've got operator licenses for Eric, Michael Bradley Bartenson, and Chad Michael Goratowsky. Do you want to consider those separately or consider them both together? How would you like to proceed? Do we have any backup on those or not?
I was just going to ask that question, Mr. President. Is there anything in the packet for this?
I'm not seeing it at the moment. Do you know about? Grab your, grab your microphone there, please.
I believe Eric is looking for a bartender's license at Neighbors. And then Chad was, wants a bartender's license at Tally's.
We, in the past, typically we've seen their application, and then if we've done the background check type of thing, did we do any of that with either one of these or not?
I am not sure. Brandon took the lead on that, so I'm not a hundred percent sure if.
All right, well, maybe we can chase that.
I know they have their applications in, so.
When he returns, okay. Do, uh, we can come back to that. Do you want to, do you want to deal with the payment of the bills? Or do we want to just wait till Brandon returns?
Do you, do you have the totals for the bills?
I do, yep.
I'm fine with moving on to that then.
All right, and I think this is probably three separate motions. The first one would probably be payment of the builder, Reuckert and Melkey, I think is seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, I believe is the correct number. Is there a motion to approve that bill? I so moved in a second.
I'll second it.
Who's got feedback? Do we know? All right, so the motion was by Trustee German, seconded by Trustee Stigler to pay the Reuckert and Melkey bill in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. Is that correct? Okay, then a roll call vote. Beth, can you run the roll call vote for us, please, here?
Kalinski?
Aye.
German?
Aye.
Fisher?
Epstein.
Dor?
Aye.
Stigler?
Aye.
Okay, so I have that passing, four in favor and unopposed, with one abstention. I believe the correct number for the payment of the balance of the bills is. I believe the correct number for the payment of the balance of the bills is one hundred six thousand fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents, one oh six oh five oh point five eight. Is there a motion to pay the balance of the bills in that amount of money?
I so moved.
I'll second.
I've got Trustee German and Trustee Kalinsky on the motion and the second. Is that correct? In discussion? If not, then we need a roll call vote as well on that.
Kalinsky.
Aye.
German.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Dor.
Aye.
Stigler.
Aye.
And then we have one other item of business, I think, and, and Beth, you might be able to help us out on that. We have got, as we've had in the past, we've got some refunds for tax overpayments. Is that correct? There's some six payees on that, two thousand two hundred and eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Is that correct?
Correct. Those were missed in the first batch.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the payment of, uh, payment of those checks for the overpayments for taxes, two thousand two hundred and eight dollars and eighty-eight cents?
I will make that motion also.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second also.
Okay, we're getting a pattern here. Trustee German, Trustee Kalinsky on the motion and the second, respectively. Roll call vote again, please.
Kalinsky.
Aye.
German.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Dor.
Aye.
Stigler.
Aye.
Okay, so, oh, hang on here just a minute on the bartender's license stuff till Brandon returns. Well, waiting for that, maybe Attorney Macy can tell us, I mean, do we, do we need to see the paper work on that or see background check type of thing? That's what we have routinely done in the past. Do you think that is essential or necessary that we do that before we act?
I will check your code. I don't know that it's required under the ordinance. It's not required in the state statute. In fact, the new state statute says you can set up a procedure where the operators are approved by staff under certain requirements, usually meaning no record. If they have a record, then they got to come to you. If there's no record, they, they don't. Every community's done that a little bit differently. So there is no requirement. It's all up to what you're comfortable, you know, approving. Is, is there thought that there is no record? And that we're just trying to confirm that?
Correct.
That's the.
We could adopt it, approve it, subject to confirmation by the village president that there's no record. And if there is a question, then it'll have to come back.
That's a way to proceed. Are you, would you be comfortable with that?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that then.
Just restate it quickly, John, so Beth can.
My understanding that the operators' licenses are being approved subject to confirmation by the village president that there's no record. If there is a record of his concern, then it would be brought back. Otherwise, the staff is authorized to issue the permit.
And that's for Eric Michael Bradley Bartelson and Chad Michael Goratowski, correct? And the motion on that was by Trustee Stigler and seconded by Trustee German. Does everybody understand that motion? And all, all in favor indicate by saying, if there's no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? If that passing, five to nothing, then a motion to adjourn the meeting of the village board at seven forty-four PM would be in order at this time?
I so moved.
I was second, so that's Trustee Kalinsky, I seconded it. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed at seven forty-four. Thank you.